Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the Narragansett School Committee. I like to call the meeting to order at 7:05. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'd like to thank everyone for coming tonight. So we are going to begin with our showcase. And I'm going to introduce Dr. Cummings to do some introductions.
Actually, I'm going to introduce Principal Chardier, and she is going to do our introduction. And we are so proud of our student tonight.
Good evening. So I'm very excited to share with you Sarah Whitworth, who is a seventh grade student at the Pierce School. Come on up. She's here with her mother, Jen, and she has achieved an outstanding honor by placing second place in the state of Rhode Island for her Patriots' pen essay. So Sarah's journey to this achievement began with a win at the post level, followed by first place at the district level, and finally securing second place in state competition. So this award ceremony was held at the Quonset Oak Club, and Sarah received recognition and certificates from many distinguished VIPs, such as Secretary of State Greg Amor, Congressman Gabe Amo, Director of Veterans Affairs for Rhode Island, Kasmin Yarn, VFW Rhode Island, Department Commander Mark Turner, Auxiliary President Stephen Doherty, and even a certificate from Governor McKee. So this is outstanding. She's here to share with you her essay, so I'm going to let Sarah do that now.
My Voice in America's Democracy. My parents tell me over and over again that it takes one person to make a difference, and they tell me it's like when a pebble hits the water, it makes a ripple effect. One little pebble doesn't make a big difference from what many people think, but when it makes ripples, the ripples can be many and can turn into bigger ripples and eventually large waves. They tell me this often with situations about kindness. I should be kind to someone because not only is it the right thing to do, but it makes that person feel good about themselves. However, if my friends and other people see me doing a nice and kind gesture to someone, they may be more willing to follow my example and also be kind to this person and perhaps other people, too. The world becomes a better place because so many people are being kind to one another. Using our voice in America's democracy is the same thing. It takes one person to speak up about an unfair law or to fight for our rights. One person's voice is like the tiny pebble in the water, because other citizens would gather to join their voices to hopefully make our community a better place for all. The Bill of Rights includes the right to free speech. Our nation founders thought that our voice in our democracy was important. Using our voices together as a community helps our elected officials know what laws to pass or not to pass to make our country the best country to live in. It is especially meaningful when we use our right to peacefully assemble, which is also included in the First Amendment. Our voices together with our peaceful gatherings really let our politicians know what we want and how we can contribute to our democracy. This creates an even bigger wave to ensure we fight for our freedom that so many others across the world wish they had.
Sarah has brought along a few of her certificates that she can share with you in just a moment, but we would like to honor Sarah right now as a Narragansett School Community with a certificate of our own of achievement. It reads, "In recognition of earning second place in the state for her outstanding Patriots' pen essay, your dedication and achievement is celebrated by our school committee and the entire school district." So congratulations, Sarah.
I got an award from Governor Dan McKee, District and State VFW, Congressman Gabe Amo, and Speaker of the House.
Thank you again, Sarah, for sharing with us. All right, I think we might do some photos real fast?
Yes.
All right, fantastic.
They may just have one or two. Do you all have any questions?
Oh, yes, absolutely.
I have a question. Is this the first essay contest that you have ever done?
Yes.
Wow, that's amazing. And it sounds like at home you're going to need to have some bigger wall space because you're a very talented writer, and I love your ideas and your creativity, and that's a really big accomplishment, and we're very proud of you. Does anyone have any other comments or questions for her before?
I just want to thank you for representing our school so well and representing our town.
Yes, and our country, just like your mom.
Thank you.
Standing up for freedom.
I really liked your analogy of the pebble in the pond and the circles with
I really liked your analogy of the pebble in the pond in the circles with the role of the individual in democracy, but that was a very good analogy.
Thank you.
So congratulations.
Thank you.
I think you might need some more frames, too.
And I'll continue to echo the sentiment. Thank you for coming to read it to us tonight as well, share it even more.
Ms. Lauren, what would you like to do for a picture? What would you like us to do? Sure. Lauren always has the plan. All right, picture perfect. I'm going to take a few of them, okay? Keep those smiles. Right.
Jen's great. She's a veteran. Oh, yeah, sure. That's right.
Well, that was a nice way to start our meeting with our showcase. So going back into the agenda, is there a motion to seal the executive session minutes from tonight?
So moved.
Second. All in favor? Aye. And we did take one vote in executive session. We approved one homeschooling request, five zero. It's now time for open forum. Is there anyone that would like to speak? Okay, so we are going to move on to our oral reports. And are there any school committee members that have a subcommittee report to give tonight? All right, Diane, you want to go first?
Sure. On National Reading Week, I had the pleasure of reading a book to Mrs. Gerard's second-grade class, and the theme this year for National Reading Week was Bloom Where You're Planted. And so the book I read then was The Curious Garden. And then on March 11th, I participated in the ethics training here at the Town Hall from the Rhode Island Ethics Committee. And the Knights of the Rockingham Arch awards were given out earlier this month, and there were seven volunteers recognized for their outstanding work in our town.
Thank you, Diane. Does anyone else have a subcommittee report to give? Justin?
Sure. So the technology subcommittee met last week, and it was a good first meeting. It was kind of more of a look at going forward, what we're going to be talking about as a committee. We did discuss, and primarily what we've already kind of discussed at the workshop, with how the telephone system is being installed as part of our technology plan. And that is really it for that committee. So good start.
All right, thank you. Any other school committee members? Okay, all right, thank you. So we're moving on to the student report. Marco.
Great, thank you. Good evening. Happy last day of winter approaching spring, finally. So lots of happenings at the high schools, I'm sure you all read. We've just been extremely active with just a multitude of events and fundraisers, activities. So definitely a longer report, so going to keep this one concise tonight. I want to thank you all for the opportunity to attend the budget workshop and, you know, even though I'm graduating, just gain some knowledge about the budget and how these things run, and also for dinner as well. As a student representative, it's just very interesting to hear the topics that were talked about, so I wanted to give some feedback. I think the new SAT prep is really going to help a lot of our students, especially to the ones that are going to be headed to those top colleges. You know, I think it is important to note, there are a lot of test optional schools out there. I applied to all test optional schools, especially since the SAT is only one small part, but overall, I really think this will help students succeed, which is very important considering a lot of schools are bringing test requirements back now after the pandemic. As you read in my report, I talked about my experience in the AP Spanish literature class and how I wanted to take four years straight of a language. So I'm really happy I challenged myself to take the AP, but I think a Spanish IV course is going to help a lot of students succeed and get those four years, because I went right from Spanish III to AP, and that's a really big jump, especially when you're doing heavy literature. So I think that's going to really help a lot of students. Continuing to work closely with Mr. Fiore and Mr. McCloskey, I'm looking forward to serving on the cellphone technology committee and helping Mr. McCloskey and Mr. Fiore find some student representatives for that. And I was going to try some more policies or some data, but very busy time at the high school right now, lots of senior project work for phones and using them for other tasks. So I didn't really think it was the best time, but definitely after the senior project presentation day, I look forward to collecting some more data. The month of March has been extremely active, as I just mentioned, but with senior project work. And, you know, right now it is definitely crunch time to get that all done, and after talking to some students and teachers, I really think this will benefit us in the long run. Right now, it's very condensed. It's lots of deadlines week after week, but this is really going to free up our May and June, considering that the AP exams are going to come up and that we will have two weeks of those. Just a couple of quick updates. So we finished the winter sports season, so congratulations to all of our athletes on phenomenal season. I think every athlete who participates in athletics contributes, so congrats to all of them. And I, along with a couple of others, have restarted to recruit for spring sports now that those are running. So I encourage you to read all of the amazing accomplishments from our winter sports season. The summer job fair that was mentioned to you all in October took place last Thursday morning, and I heard that it helped a lot of students look for job opportunities. And with that, as I said, I encourage you to read the updates, events, field trips that have happened or are coming up. I especially look forward to Senior Project Presentation Day in a couple of weeks. Thanks for letting me come to the budget and for dinner as well. I do like Jersey mics, whatever we did to get those cards, let's do that again, please. So I'm open to any questions you have.
I just think it's interesting that as an admissions requirement, the SAT at some colleges is now up to the student. It's test optional?
Yes, so it's not required for you to put it on the Common App either, so you can leave that blank on the Common App if you don't want all the schools you're applying to to see it. If there is one test-required school, then you send those to the colleges separately. But I believe URI, RIC, like I went all test optional, and there are a lot of options out there. A lot of them are bringing them back after COVID, which is why I think the prep is going to help.
Yeah, because it is the most objective measure that most colleges have, and I probably was born too late.
I just want to compliment you on your written report. So it's clear you took a lot of time to really share a lot of different highlights. It's very well-written, very succinct, and your report was great tonight, you know, spotlighting some of the things. So very well done, and thank you for taking the time to do that. We do enjoy reading that every month.
Thank you. Yes, every month I keep a list going, and then I edit it as I go because there's a lot happening.
Any other questions or comments for Marco? All right, thank you. Yep, thank you. Okay, we're on to the superintendent's report. Dr. Cummings?
Great. It is tough to follow Marco and his highlights, but I'll try to touch on a couple of things. First of all, you know, congrats to our girls' basketball team at the high school, Division Two champs. They had a fabulous season. They played a great championship game. They then went into the open tournament and lost, I believe, the Sweet 16. But again, just a fabulous accomplishment by, you know, the players, the coaches, and our fans were wonderful. It was really a joy to be at the game and watch our elementary and middle schoolers there. I also had the privilege of being at March Madness last Friday, where our boys and girls' basketball teams played a combined team of our SROs and teachers. And so at the elementary school, there was so much excitement, the air was literally vibrating. And so it was really, you know, a fun, just community event, watching, you know, our kind of grown-up athletes who are graduating kind of high-fiving some of our kindergartners and first graders and really see the connection between them was really wonderful and really said a lot about who we are as a community and was really great to see. You know, we were recently highlighted in a study from Harvard, and so when you look at those scores, you know, Narragansett, in comparison to all the other districts in Rhode Island, has had a much stronger growth rate in our reading and math scores than almost anyone else in the state, and so we're really proud of that, whereas most of the state was kind of analyzed as being kind of declining below 2019 levels and kind of being grade levels below that. You know, in both math and ELA, we are more than a grade level above where we were in 2019. So that really shows the hard work of our teachers, our administrators, and just how well we're doing as a district. So, you know, that was really nice to see in terms of our growth. So, you know, more to come, but that work has been important. You know, our winter athletes, as Marco said, did a great job, not only our girls' basketball team, but wrestling, track, you know, boys' basketball had a good year, swimming. So again, there was a lot of really good stuff that happened this year. I do want to highlight Cole Francis. You know, he ran in Nationals last weekend, wasn't Marco? You know, again, had a great time, and so like a great actual literal time. I think he also had like fun, but, you know, we're really proud of him and all the great stuff that he's doing. As Marco said, we are working on our cellphone policy. We do have a community meeting about that on March 31st, so we're going to have reps from all the different schools with schools, with parents and students there. So I'm appreciative to Mr. McCloskey for kind of moving that forward, and we will have a policy to bring to the policy committee of the school committee. We're hoping in March or April, we're waiting for the legislation to be finalized at the state level, so we don't have to rewrite our policy after that is finalized. Finally, you know, I do want to congratulate our high school that recently had their NIASK visit, New England Association of Schools and Colleges. That's the 10-year accreditation visit. There is a ton of work that goes into that. So many thanks to Chris and Connor and our chairs and lead writers, you know, Adam Reese, Jenan Lee Lopes, Judy Maynard, and Joanne Gongaleski. They put so much work into that. There is so much data to gather, so much organizing to do, and the committee was blown away. And so, you know, their feedback to the school and to the faculty was top-notch. They were incredibly impressed with the work that happens at the high school, incredibly impressed with our faculty, with our students, with the facilities, you know, so it really was a glowing report. And so we're really proud of our high school and everything that went into getting ready for that visit, but not just that, of being recognized for all the good things that happen and it doesn't happen in a vacuum. You know, it's really a K-12 effort there.
Great, thank you. Any questions for Dr. Cummings? Marco?
Just to comment, I wanted to thank Mr. Fiore about the girls' basketball championship he organized with Mr. Maher as well, a fan bus for all the students to travel on, which I think I put in the written report, but that was very nice. And as a part of the principals' council, I was at the NIASK meeting for the students, and I can tell you that we definitely made Narragansett look good, and they were really happy with us.
Well, thanks for your contributions to that. Any other questions for Dr. Cummings? Okay, all right, thank you. Okay, we are moving on to consent agenda. Is there a motion to accept the recommendation of the superintendent to approve Consent Agenda Item CA 1B, CA 1C, CA 1D, CA 2A, CA 2B, and CA 2C?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed? Motion passes, five zero. On to the budget report. Karen?
Good evening. Expenditures for the eight months ended February 28, 2025, total $20,365,258, and that's 55.21% of our budget. Expenditures and encumbrances total $31,839,481, and that's 86.32% of the budget.
Thank you. Are there any questions for Karen? Okay, so we're going to move on to our school committee business, and the first item is one of our most important items and responsibilities that we do every year. And so is there a motion to accept the recommendation of the superintendent and the director of Finance Administration to approve the fiscal year, I should say, 2026 budget in the amount of $37,249,779?
Moved.
Second.
Discussion. I don't know, Pete, if there's anything you want to summarize from?
So first of all, I want to thank the committee and anyone that tuned in to our budget workshops. I think that's a really important process where we can ask lots of questions, get into the details of the budget, and make any adjustments based on the input of the committee. So that is, you know, again, a very important process. So one of the things that I'll remind the committee about is that I will be presenting to the town council on Monday night, and so I would, you know, certainly encourage, you know, members of the public to attend that meeting. That's at 6:00 PM right here in the council chambers. And so I will, again, kind of go over our budget based on the adjustments that were made during the workshop process and present that to the town council. As a reminder, our overall budget is less than 1%, and so, you know, we are kind of working through a cut to state aid, so we're working with the town on that to make sure that we are appropriately funded going forward. And I appreciate the support of our parent community, the Narragansett community at large, and all the work that the committee put in in looking at the budget and asking some hard questions. So thank you.
Any other questions or comments before we take our vote?
I don't think so.
And again, it's just a thank you as well. I think that, you know, high-level recap, and you kind of just talked about that, at the February meeting, we had a pretty comprehensive presentation that you gave us that was pretty detailed. And then, you know, Budget Workshop Number One with the different areas with the principals. Budget Workshop Number Two, really focusing on facilities and transportation and capital and technology. And then, you know, some subcommittee work that goes with that, with building committee and long-term capital planning, and, you know, great collaboration, a lot of hard work, you know, starting at the building level from the principals, all the different departments and central office staff, and a lot of work with you and Karen, and a lot of good questions from the school committee. And I feel really proud that we were able to really prioritize programs for students, what students need, aligning with our long-term district strategic plan and our overall goals, and then doing that at the same time with all of the costs increasing, but to keep our overall budget at a 0.99% despite the reduction in state aid. So we don't get a whole lot of funding from the state, but when we have a 13% reduction in state aid compared to the year prior, that's a big impact when you're looking at a $300,000 change decrease from last year. So I'm really proud of the budget that we are moving forward to the town council, and I think that your presentation will be another good opportunity for the public to get more information, to ask questions, for the town council members to ask questions. for the town council members to ask questions, and, you know, as we progress along. So I'm really grateful for the work that led up to this and proud of the budget that we're voting on tonight. Any other questions or comments before we vote?
No. One other piece I'll just put in, Tammy, you know, one question we often get asked is, are we making adjustments based on student population, right? And so I'll just remind the committee, we're eliminating nine positions, you know, through in this budget, and that is a big hit. But unfortunately, you know, because of our shifts in population and the reduction in state aid, we do have to cut those nine positions this year.
I think the only comment I really have is because we talked about this at length, as you mentioned, the previous things. It's a, well, it seems the public sentiment is very happy with this, but people who watched the meetings, who attended or who reached out, seem to have really had a positive sentiment. So it really, I think this, you know, this is the second year we've had them be public, our budget workshops, and I'm kind of changing my tune. I think it's, was pretty nice to get people to watch. So, thank you.
All right. So we have a motion on the floor in a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes 5-0. Thank you, everyone. So moving on to the next item, number two. Is there a motion to accept the recommendation of the superintendent for displacement of the following teacher, seniority number 25-97, and the reconfirmation of non-renewal of the following teacher, seniority number 25141, based upon the following reasons. Due to the number of students projected to require services in certain areas, it is anticipated that it will be necessary to restructure positions or programs, and/or is believed there are better teachers to fill that position.
So moved?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes 5-0. And then we've got several business items tonight to vote on. So number three. Is there a motion to accept the recommendation of the superintendent to approve the Narragansett educational support professionals contract for 2025 to 2028?
So moved?
Second.
Discussion?
So I would recommend approval of this contract to the committee. So we work very closely with our support professionals. So this is our union that includes our teacher assistants, secretaries, bus drivers, transportation, custodians, maintenance. They are, you know, as you can see from the shape of our building and from the way that we do our transportation, you know, excellent group to work with. I will say that the, you know, negotiation process was mutually respectful, understanding of both the needs of our employees and the economic conditions within the town. I think we've reached a reasonable settlement of the contract. And so I do know that their union is certainly, has voted in favor of it for approval. And so it is awaiting the approval of the school committee to be finalized.
And I just want to add, so Diane and I, with the school committee members that sat on that negotiations team, and that was the first time I had been involved in the Narragansett, one of the unions, the negotiations. I was really impressed with the spirit of cooperating and that shared goal of, you know, putting the needs of students first and how do we get there. I think the administration team, as well as the people representing, the staff members kind of came prepared with kind of asks and concerns, or some contract language, and some of the language was very minor semantics of how things were worded, and some were some pretty big contract changes. And, you know, over a pretty quick amount of time, we're able to reach consensus, and both sides feel good about the concessions and the compromises to land with a contract that is good for students and good for the long-term fiscal impact as well, too, because it's a three-year contract that we're voting on tonight. So I enjoyed the process. It went a lot faster than I thought it would, which is good because you never know. And it, I think that is attributed to the positive relationship that you have built with the leadership with both unions. Because if you get to the negotiating table with a relationship where there's not trust or transparency, or there are, you know, is some kind of hostility, sometimes it comes out during negotiations and you kind of get at a stalemate for a while, which isn't good for students and isn't good for anyone. But it was, you know, positive and cooperative and productive. So thank you to your leadership, Pete.
Thank you. Well, they are a great group to work with. And, you know, again, I appreciate the support of the committee as we kind of work through those pieces. Again, you know, the focus really is on students, and I'm appreciative of, you know, the support of our unions, both support staff, and we are walking into negotiations with our teachers next. So we are certainly looking forward to a productive conversation with that as well.
Right. Any other final questions or comments before we vote? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes 5-0. On to item number four. Is there a motion to accept the recommendation of the superintendent and the director of finance administration to approve the purchase of Fortinet 40 Voice Support Contracts from CDWG at a total cost of $15,400?
So moved?
Second.
So the next couple of items, I believe, will be Julio, and so I'll let him jump into it.
Yeah, absolutely. So as we discussed at the budget hearings and like Justin mentioned at our district technology meeting, the, our big project for this summer is replacing the phone system, along with the help of Steve Gormley and his department. So this item is for the actual PBX, a service contract for the PBX, which is going to be our backup, and a service contract for the PBX that we currently have. We bought one about six months ago to start working on the configuration because we didn't want to wait till last minute to start building the system. We're going to try to have it, you know, up and going in July, so we want to work on it as quickly as possible. So this is basically for, the PBX is the brains of the operation. It handles all the incoming outgoing calls, it does the extensions, it does caller's menus, it does voicemail. It's basically your everything. So the reason we're having two of them is we're going to put one at our high school with a SIP trunk coming into it, which will be our main functional one. But in case that SIP line ever goes down, we're going to install a secondary SIP at our middle school with the same exact 40 Voice PBX. So if the one at the high school fails, it fails over directly to the middle school, so there'll be no downtime whatsoever.
And just a reminder to the committee that, you know, Julio and Steve and their teams are putting this in ourselves at, you know, substantial, like hundreds of thousands of dollars, substantial savings rather than having a contractor do it. And so, you know, these are the pieces that make it necessary for us to, you need the parts, right? And so these are the parts.
Any other questions or comments before we vote? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes 5-0. On to item number five. Is there a motion to accept the recommendation of the superintendent and the director of finance administration to approve the purchase of phones and wall mounts from GovConnection at a total cost of $36,514.29?
So moved?
Second.
Discussion?
So this is for the actual physical phones that'll be in the classrooms and in the offices. So we're purchasing 200 phones to have about 10 extra spares in case of any of them get damaged. But those are going to be your more basic wall-mounted phones in the classroom. And the other 58 phones are kind of like your middle range with multiple extensions on them, multiple options for people like secretaries, principals, guidance counselors, those type of devices. And the third item is for the wall mounts, because the phones don't come with a wall mount, you have to buy it separately. So they're, they come in 10 packs, so we're going to buy 200 for the district for the 200 basic phones that we have for the classrooms.
And just a reminder, if all of the votes go through tonight, and then you start to place the orders, are you anticipating this whole change will take place in the summer or?
Yeah, so we're anticipating having most, probably 90% of the configuration done prior to summer, prior to the end of the school. And then school ends on June 20th. That following week, we're going to hit the ground running. And the hope is we're actually finished by the end to beginning of August. So we have plenty of time to work out any kinks, do testing, and we have those final two weeks of August if anything were to come up.
All right. Thank you. Any other questions or comments before we vote? All those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes 5-0. On to item number six. Is there a motion to accept the recommendation of the superintendent and the director of finance administration to approve the purchase of 13 Aruba switches for the new phone system from CDWG at a total cost of $28,548?
So moved?
Second.
Discussion?
So since this is a strictly IP-based phone system, we don't have enough ports on our existing switches, and some of our switches are getting older, like we've discussed at the tech committee meeting, which we'll be looking to replace next year. So this is a good opportunity to get those new switches in for the phone system and eventually for the paging, and then do the data network the following year. So this is to add, to add the amount of ports that we need within our district for these IP phones.
Any questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes 5-0. Thank you. On to item number seven. Is there a motion to accept the recommendation of the superintendent and the director of finance administration to approve the purchase of new desktops, monitors, and monitor stands from Dell Technologies for the NHS Computer CTE Lab at a total cost of $29,999.50?
So moved?
Second.
Discussion?
So just as a reminder to the committee, you know, we did talk about this during our budget workshops. So we are able to fund the revamping of our CTE computer lab at the high school. The courses have become, you know, so much more popular, and we also have that thriving robotics program. We just need some more space, so we're doing some room reconfiguration. So we are able to fund the bulk of this through grants, right? So Perkins Grants, which come for CTE, through some housing aid reimbursement, and through some lower prices that we've gotten on some budgeted pieces. So we're using the, you know, the difference to help fund the revisions to the computer lab so it doesn't have to add to next year's budget.
Yeah. And this will be, what we envision is those six bays I talked about, four workstations at each of those. So that gives us those 24 workstations, dual-monitor setup. There'll eventually be TV screen up there for sharing. And then the 25th system is for a teacher workstation, so it's set there because you will have multiple teachers coming in and out. So they can take their laptops where they go, but there'll be a dedicated workstation there. So that's why there's 25 in the stands for them, just to make everything look uniform, and two monitors per.
And do you anticipate that these would get delivered and set up by summer, like?
Yeah, so they're, they're guaranteeing delivery within 30 days, so we'll have them. Once the room is ready, we're ready to go. I know Steve has an agenda item coming up for furniture. So this will all be work done during the summer, but it will be ready for the first day of school.
Great. Any questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes 5-0. Thank you.
Thank you.
On to item number eight. Is there a motion to accept the recommendation of the superintendent and the director of finance administration to approve the purchase of one Skyjack scissor lift from ATS Equipment Incorporated at a cost of $14,381.70?
Second.
Discussion?
Good evening. This is a lift for work in the gymnasiums and around the building, anything that's at height. We currently have antiquated systems that are single-man lifts that are pretty unsafe. So this is to replace those with one single unit that'll be shared between three schools and help us get to areas that we currently can't get to.
So this will be used with the drive-in project that you talked about?
No, this, this is a lift for our own work within the building. So we, like the flags in the gymnasium, the banners, if they're over the bleachers, we can't get to them. They are fire-rated every two years, so they have to come down every two years. It's, there's a lot of other things that we repair and work on. This allows us to get to the outside edges of those areas that are obstructed by bleachers or other equipment. And it's a lot safer. It's, the current system is a straight ladder. It goes straight up, and you sit here in a bucket on it. It's very unsafe, so.
Yeah, and I take it equipment like this will allow you to do more in-house rather than hiring out and things like, you know, the phone project makes it a little bit easier.
Yeah.
When I was reading the specs for it, I saw something like 28 miles an hour. I was like, wow, this thing goes 28 miles an hour.
Not down the hallway.
It only goes, yeah, .5 miles per hour, but it's rated for winds of up to 25, 28 miles per hour. It's a lot less exciting than I originally thought. But, no, it seems like an important piece of equipment to have around.
And thank you for, you know, prioritizing safety as always and being proactive with that.
It's important. As I get older, I don't like heights at all, so.
Any questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes 5-0. On to item number nine. Is there a motion to accept the recommendation of the superintendent and the director of finance administration to accept the proposal from Martone Service Company Incorporated to purchase and install four storage buildings at Narragansett High School for $74,681?
So moved?
Second.
Discussion?
So as a reminder to the committee, this is in our current capital plan, right? And so when we had this discussion last year, it's a long-term savings in terms of we don't have to have rental storage trailers that are, you know, a substantial cost over time. Also just holds more things and, you know, is better organized.
And it's aesthetically pleasing. Over a Connex box. So this, this project includes excavation of the property, making it drain, drain system off the area that they're going. And if you use your imagination, they're small self-storage units. They have roll-up doors. So like the art department, I'm sorry, the drama department will get one, and they store all their stage stuff in it, which currently is in a Connex box. If you're familiar with the Connex box, they sweat inside, everything's nasty, and the stuff just doesn't last. These will be dry and, and they're very portable, so they can be moved if we need to. But, and then we got to select a color.
We'll work on that.
Where, where do you anticipate they will go on the property to start?
The two large ones are going to go back-to-back. They're 10 by 30. There's two 10 by 30s that go back-to-back between the middle school and the high school in the area of the auditorium, in that area where the current storage boxes, if you drive through, there's a dumpster and a storage container over there. That's the primary location for the large ones. The two smaller ones are very portable, and they're going to be moved as needed for athletics and other events that go on to store equipment.
Any questions or comments?
I'm just happy we're using a local company.
Yeah. Me, too.
Any other final questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes 5-0. And we have one more voting item for tonight. Is there a motion to accept the recommendation of the superintendent and the director of finance administration to approve the purchase of furniture for the computer CTE lab at Narragansett High School from Verco Incorporated in the total amount of $26,748.68?
So moved?
Second.
Discussion?
So this is furnishings that were collaboratively spoken about between the teachers, the teachers' costs, myself, the IT department, Julio, and determined that this would be the best fit for those rooms, for the CT computer labs. The anticipation is to, my anticipation is to get into that room in April and renovate the room, and then as the furniture arrives, build that room out after that point. So it comes early summer, it's available for Julio to get in and get it set up.
Any questions or comments? We're very excited to see, I'd like to see some pictures of the new computer lab once it's fully furnished and
We can do that.
set to go. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion pass- Motion passes 5-0. Thank you, Steve.
Thank you. Just want to say also, we've, we've said it before between you and Giulio, saving the district 50%, and you guys doing it in-house with all your work, we really appreciate that.
We, we work really hard to make, make a difference in what we spend, and we really watch what we do, so.
No, I mean, we, we can see that internally, but we want to let, thank you personally.
Appreciate it.
It comes out in sweat, we know.
Thank you. Are there any communications anyone wants to mention? All right, very important meeting coming up this Monday night, March 24th, at 6 o'clock here, where Dr. Cummings is going to present the school budget that we just passed tonight to the town council. Thank you, Town Council President, Mr. Benzies, for joining us tonight, and we really look forward to any questions that the town council members have about the budget. Please join us if you can for the very important meeting, 6 o'clock here, this Monday night, March 24th. And then, our regular business meeting in April will be after April school vacation, April 23rd at 7 o'clock. With that, is there a motion to adjourn at 7:52?
So moved.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Have a good night, everyone.